Hi, everybody. My name is Maya. I am a junior at Cambridge Jolatin High School. So I think I'm the youngest person. Nope, there's three kids. I forgot. I'm the fourth youngest person in this room. And so first off, we have Stanislav Rivkin.
Great, thank you, Maya. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for being here and tuning in tonight on Zoom. I hope the mic is working. I hope I'm speaking loud enough. My name is Stanislav Rivkin. I'm running for Cambridge City Council to fight back against the Trump administration and stand up for immigrants and low-income people across the city. This is pretty personal to me. I was an immigrant from Uzbekistan as a child. I grew up relying on so many of the social support programs that are being cut right now federally. And for the last 15 years, I've been working tirelessly to uplift my various communities. I've been growing programs to support at-risk youth and battle houselessness. I've taught thousands of students the skills necessary to create a fairer future. And currently, I'm working at the Harvard Graduate School of Education, preparing the next generation of civic leaders. I'm running because our neighbors are under assault across the city. They're terrorized by ICE. They're losing their federal food and housing assistance. And while our city council is well-intentioned, have gotten to know many of the folks, and they are good people, there's so much more than we must urgently do. First, we can protect the people coming under attack by issuing municipal ID cards that allow undocumented residents to more safely identify themselves and use city services. We can substantially increase legal aid funding and support nonprofits who are already providing these services. We can conduct substantially more outreach within our immigrant communities, providing food delivery and other resources directly to residents when they fear traveling to points of service due to the presence of ICE. Secondly, we must demonstrate a progressive alternative to MAGA and provide a model for the rest of the country to do so. Last fall, too many working-class people supported MAGA because they were uninspired by the crumbs of progress in tackling inequality and excuses that Moore's too ambitious or can never be possible. We need new voices, energy, bold solutions, and courageous leaders willing to take the fight to the exploitative forces that are assailing Cambridge. We need to restore RISEUP, a cash assistance program for the lowest-income families in Cambridge, which benefited 7,000 people, but sadly was discontinued in February. We need to expand support for food pantries, many of which run out of food in one of the richest cities in the country. We need to expand shelter capacity and tackle the homelessness crisis. And rather than relying on corporate profiteers to solve our entire housing crisis, we need to invest in public solutions such as mixed-income public housing, community land trusts, and expand municipal vouchers to create affordability. If elected, nobody will fight harder or more relentlessly against Trump or on behalf of our progressive values. I hope I can earn your number-one vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Robert Winters.
Hi there. I'm Robert Winters. I live over on Broadway. And in another hour or so, I have to go teach a class up at Harvard Extension School because that's what I really do. I teach mathematics. That's been my profession for many, many, many years. In terms of issues I really care about, I would say municipal finance and tax burdens on residents. And now, it's big in the news the last couple of days. It's about commercials, too. It's like small businesses. I care a lot about maintaining good public safety. And in terms of some of the more controversial issues, I'm definitely a supporter of more balance in terms of roads. I think drivers have some rights, too, and it's not all about the bicycles. I did not agree with the doubling and tripling of heights and the reduction of setbacks. We're part of both the Affordable Housing Overlay as well as the recent multifamily zoning, though like most people in this city, perfectly okay with having multifamily housing throughout the city. It just I didn't agree with the massive upzoning. In terms of things that I feel some pride in, I do maintain the Cambridge candidate pages, where a lot of people find out. And the election calendar that I've been doing for a quarter century now. I've been writing the Cambridge Civic Journal for now 27, 28 years, I think. I've served on the Green Ribbon Open Space Committee that made a lot of recommendations, some of which have been implemented here in Cambridgeport. And even the Technical Working Committee for Computerization of the Elections, I played a role in that. I was one of the people that helped get the recycling started in Cambridge. And for at least a decade, I was sort of known as the compost man because I was promoting backyard composting and distributed over 2,000 compost bins around Cambridge. Currently, I serve on the Central Square Advisory Committee. Central Square means a lot to me. And I suppose I could go on and on about this, but I think that's probably plenty. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Patty Nolan.
Thank you. I'm Patty Nolan. And hopefully, you know me. I have a solid record of serving you for many years on school committee and now for a few years on city council. I am known for thoughtfully deliberating issues. My hallmark is an insistence on digging into and using data, asking tough questions, which is exactly what you deserve. Priority: We are entering a time of financial headwinds that we have not seen for 30 years. We no longer have the blank check we basically had from all the development that happened. My background from starting work around co-ops, running a small business, McKinsey Consultant, nonprofit, serves you well and is really needed as we move into these different times. Our budget this year was actually pretty tough. I was finance chair, and all my colleagues and I worked on it. It'll be much tougher next year. And I've been a voice for understanding how to save, how to pivot, and how to work smarter so that we can continue to do the phenomenal things we've been able to do. I'm also honest and open about the hard choices. And I am not out there promising that we're going to expand a bunch of stuff because we will not be able to. Want to address the upzoning, which everyone in the city seems to be talking about? We need more housing. That is why all of the, I think, the community and all of the city councils supported multifamily everywhere. But the how of it was a little different. All nine of us voted for six stories. All nine of us voted for no design review because that's what happens if you adhere to zoning. And all nine of us voted for smaller setbacks. I worked with several of my colleagues. Kudos. We all worked on a compromise, a little bit of a moderation, to make sure that it served the city well. And that was the final one that was voted. And we all know if the goal of affordable housing isn't met, and we all see luxury townhouses, I and I hope anyone else, if I'm on the council, will propose changes because we did this for affordable housing, not only luxury townhouses. But remember, there were other petitions in the past for zoning that didn't pass. You need majority support to do anything. So a reason to vote for me, number one, also is that one of my passions is I'm a leader on climate, which includes trees, public health, housing, decarbonization. I would love to be able to continue that. Go to my website, pattynolan.org, to see it. More work on that. And I'm really hard to categorize since I avoid rigid stances. In these days of increasing polarization, even here in Cambridge, that's pretty risky. I can only win if voters recognize and reward my work, threading the needle on issues, moving Cambridge forward, and doing what is best for everyone. Thank you so much.
We have Dana Ray Bolster.
Glad I have the microphone to follow Patty. Everyone can hear me. I'm Dana Bolster. I am a data scientist and a public policy researcher with the back. Oh, can you hear? No? Okay. I'll, okay. More power. I'm Dana Bolster. And I'm a data scientist and public policy researcher. I have a background in economics. And I've been living in Cambridge for most of my adult life, more than a decade. I am very dedicated and involved in the community. I'm the chair of the board of our very own YWCA Cambridge. I also serve on the Commercial Parking Control Committee. I want to combine my passion for this community with my professional background to bring some new perspectives to some of the challenges that we're all facing as a city, especially some of our key challenges. I have a lot of ideas. But I'll focus on just one of the top ones, which of course is the housing affordability is top. And I do want to focus on transit-oriented housing and focused development in squares and corridors. But I also want to expand our conversation to consider a new idea, well, some new ideas that I think really should be at the center of some of our conversations. They're some of, they're new to our city conversations, but they've actually been implemented in many other cities. And so one, and our, is our ideas that I believe could be one of the most powerful ways to address some of the negative impacts of investors who really can treat neighborhoods more like assets than communities. So I'm talking about considering a land value tax, which basically involves lowering the tax on homes, on houses and buildings, and actually raising the tax on land. And so this has been shown in other cities to successfully really target some of the most wealthy landowners, including those who are the owners of the property that contains vacant storefronts, and simultaneously lower the taxes for most individual homeowners and landlords who really productively use their homes. It can increase revenue for the city and I think is fiscally responsible, which is something that is so important right now. As far as something that I'm proud of, wow. I'm proud of my leap that I took to become a researcher. I really think that I support transitioning from a perspective of kind of, you know, individual people to really changing systems, which I think is important. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we have Burhan Azeem.
Hi, everyone. My name is Burhan Azeem. I'm a city councillor here in Cambridge. I'm finishing up my second term. The way that I prioritize the issues in the city are really around the top three costs I see that residents have, right? It's housing, it's childcare, it's transportation. Those are the biggest struggles. And in every survey, we say that those are the top issues that people are always struggling with. Housing is kind of the thing that I'm most known for in that I've both done work locally, but I also started abundant housing Massachusetts, which is trying to say that the whole state needs to build housing. And so we've been working in like Lexington and Milton and all these other sorts of communities to make sure that they're building housing, too. You know, as my colleague councillor Nolan said before, I think a hot topic has been the multifamily zoning that we passed this year. What I wanted to say about that is that I'm very proud that we got it over the finish line. policymaking is really, really hard. For a long time, whether it was our changes to parking minimums or to the zoning, they just failed through City Hall. And now things are passing, you know, eight-one. And that's not because of magic or because people are like dramatically have different opinions. It's because we're deciding to work together, right? We picked a zoning that will build more housing, but it will also build more deed-restricted affordable housing. And there were compromises along the way to limit it to larger lots. And that is something that takes a lot of will and a lot of guts and a lot of kudos to say that, you know, the color right now we have is gray and we have to choose a new favorite color. And what's hard in a city like Cambridge is you have 120,000 brilliant minds. And whenever you're talking, the expert in that field is going to be in the audience. And we all have very strong opinions what the next color is going to be. But if we don't make a decision, we get stuck with gray. And so you need to make a decision. And maybe all of us would have done it a little bit differently, but it's better than what we had before. And that's called progress, right? Sure. And I just wanted to say, like, it's not just like the colleagues who voted for it who agree with it. You know, when I talk about the work that we did on changing zoning to allow for more flexibility because not everyone had a car, that was an eight-one vote. And the one vote that didn't vote for it was Dennis Carlon, whose quote I shared with this morning, who said that, you know, I agree with Burhan a lot. I didn't agree with him on everything. But he was always thoughtful and trying to make a good decision. And I think that that's a lot of the work, right? I think that my, like, message to you all is governing is hard. There's a lot of really difficult choices we make. And I'm proud of all the work that we've done to try to move the city forward. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a reminder to everybody in the crowd to please not interrupt. Next, we have Ayesha Wilson.
Thank you, Maya. Hi, good evening, everyone. My name is councillor Ayesha Wilson. I am the proud mom of an active, beautiful toddler, a dedicated social worker, lifelong Cambridge resident, former school committee member, executive director of Emerge Massachusetts, and currently serving as your city councillor. I'm running for reelection to continue the work we've started together. I see the mic is chipped out, but I'm trying to get it back. With years of experience in human services and youth development, I brought a strong compassionate voice to the council. If reelected, I'll continue to use my deep roots in the city, my knowledge, and my proven track record to make Cambridge more affordable, inclusive, and equitable for all. There are so many priorities that are close to my heart, and I'm sure are close to yours, from affordable housing to childcare, after-school programs, to supporting small businesses, ensuring care for our elders, folks with disabilities, young adults, those who are battling food insecurities. Louder? Louder? Okay, food insecurities, cash assistance, and so much more. Our community has real needs, and I'm committed to addressing them. One concern I keep hearing from residents is the lost sense of community. And I believe that we can build that together. I'm so incredibly, incredibly proud to be the third black woman and fourth woman of color to serve on the council. But through my work with Emerge, I look forward to creating pathways to seeing that number grow. One recent win I'm especially excited about is securing funding for the Community Benefits Fund. These dollars directly supported our nonprofits and will help them continue to do the vital work that they need to be doing, and especially at this time. As we head into the final four weeks of this election, I am asking for your number-one vote. Let's continue to build Cambridge and build a better Cambridge. Let's do that together. Team Ayesha needs your help and support. So you can visit me and all my social media websites at VoteAyesha. My campaign website is VoteAyesha.com. Again, I look forward to earning your support and number-one vote and seeing you on the doors. Thank you all so much.
A quick volume note for those in back. It is way easier to hear up front. So if you want to move in, if you want to fill in spaces along the wall, I'll keep messing with the mic. I'm sorry about that. But it is way louder up here if you want to move up.
Yeah, no. Thank you. Next, we have Elizabeth Visio.
My, I don't think it works. I don't think it works either. So, good evening. Can you guys hear me in the back? Sort of.
Good floor.
Okay. So my name is Elizabeth Visio, and I am running for the first time for Cambridge City Council. I'm a renter. I'm a neighbor in Cambridge Crossing and stepparent to a 10-year-old at the Cambridgeport School. I started my career as an emergency room nurse before moving into healthcare innovation. And today, I lead product and operations for a veterinary startup based here in Cambridge. My work has always been about building systems that serve people better, whether it be patients, pet owners, or neighbors throughout the city. I'm running for council because I believe that leadership means dreaming big but also holding ourselves accountable for measurable progress that creates real benefits for residents. My top priority is responsible growth that strengthens our neighborhoods and not overwhelms them. We can welcome new housing while still protecting what makes our neighborhood special. One-size-fits-all does not kind of do that right now. And so I believe that in kind of protecting character scale in our green space across the city. If elected, I would work to reinstate design review, put in parking minimums that would be based on transit access, and protect solar and open space so that we can have a more sustainable and livable Cambridge. I would also push for more transparency with our public dashboards so residents can see where new projects are happening and where they deliver on affordability. That's how we build trust, through clarity, communication, and results. One accomplishment that I'm proud of is building a business here in Cambridge. When we first started Tandem Vet Care, it was out of my car in Cambridge Crossing. We've now served over 500 residents here in Cambridge and built connections across neighborhoods. So that is why I'm running to continue to deliver results for people here. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jiven Sobrino Wheeler.
Thank you. And thank you all so much for being here. My name is Jiven Sobrino Wheeler. I'm serving my second term on the Cambridge City Council. I'm the son of a single mom, and we depended on affordable housing and affordable childcare when I was growing up. And I'm running for reelection to make sure that more people in Cambridge have access to those things. I've spent my career working on those things at nonprofits and advocacy organizations. I live less than a block from here, at the corner of Brookline and Erie Streets. And there's an older woman who used to live in this building who would sit right out there at the corner of Brookline and Erie Streets. And every time that me and my partner would walk by, she would say, "You're handsome." And she's pretty. And I love that. And I think about that a lot because when you're running for city council, you go to a lot of candidate forums. And it was at one of these forums in 2023 that one of the other candidates I was sitting next to said, as a reason that he was against the Affordable Housing Overlay we passed, "No one wants to live next to a 12-story building." And I went home, and I looked up how many stories this building was. And guess what? It is 12 stories tall. And I love living next to it. And I love living next to it because I get to live next to people like that woman. And I am proud to have worked on legislation that's going to allow more people like her to live in the city. I am proud to have worked to end forced brokers' fees to rent an apartment because then it's going to allow more people like her to live in the city. And it's why I'm proud to be pushing for universal after-school so that we can guarantee an after-school spot for every kid that needs one because it is far too expensive to afford childcare right now. And I see both of those things, affordable housing, affordable childcare, affordability, as tied to our value of being a sanctuary city and to our welcoming community ordinance, which is the thing I'm most proud of to have worked on this term, to protect our immigrant residents. Because I think it's not enough to just say, "We value you" no matter which country you're from, no matter your sexual orientation. We have to make sure that people can actually afford to live here. I need your number-one vote. I lost my first election, reelection, by just a handful of votes. And it could happen again. If you value these things, if you value affordability, if you value being a welcoming city that we all get to share together, I need your support. And I'm asking for your number-one vote on November 4th. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have La Queen Battle.
All right. Thank you so much. God bless you all. Thank you. Thank you. All the way to the back. Can you hear me? All right. Hello, everybody. My name is La Queen Battle. I'm originally from Fort Worth, Texas. I am a proud daughter of a single father, Larry Battle, and my home, a home business, Pounds Electronics Electronics in Fort Worth, Texas. It is an honor to be here in Cambridge. I've been in the state of Massachusetts for about seven years since COVID. I've been in the shelter system. And even though I've been in the shelter system, I've still been able to work and receive the resources here in Cambridge and throughout Massachusetts all throughout the pandemic. I've had the opportunity to work at Harvard, at a Harvard Medical Science Center. I've worked in the Harvard Business School. So the Harvard community knows me. Now, I want you, the city of Cambridge, to know me and what we're standing for, what we're fighting for. There's a lot that needs to be done in Cambridge. Of course, affordable housing is number one. People know Cambridge. You know what? They know Cambridge because, of course, it is, it is one of the highest rates of rental prices in the state of Massachusetts is in Cambridge. And I believe that it's something that we can do about it. I do agree that, that there does need to be certain standards that need to be met with affordable housing. I'm very grateful that the city of Cambridge just passed a housing overlay to make certain standards on, on the certain heights of affordable housing buildings. I'm very grateful that, that the city of Cambridge passed the social housing standard just about two weeks ago. And I'm grateful that the city of Cambridge does continue to support social housing in this city. And that is something that we need to rely upon. Also, as well as, of course, with the federal shutdown that's happening right now with the Trump administration, everybody is losing resources, not just with food scarcity, but with unemployment, with, with, with your, with your, your rental income, with ICE agents, with federal grants, with budget restraints under the Trump administration. We still need to continue to remain united in this city, in Cambridge. And it's a pleasure and an honor to be here today. Thank you so much for your time today. I'm open and I'm honest. You're more than welcome to come into my home. God bless you all. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. This is a reminder to please stand closer to the computer when you're speaking. Next, we have John Hanready.
Hello, John Hanready. I'm running for city council. I need your number-one vote. Up higher? Okay. So I've lived in Cambridge for 40 years. My son went to public school here. And I've started several tech companies in Cambridge, which supported, you know, thousands of jobs around the area. I also have an MS in data science. So I believe in data. I believe in the truth there. And I have a fellowship in clean energy. So I understand the issues around clean energy. I bring unique experience to the office of a city councillor. I have negotiated multi-million-dollar deals. I've collaborated to form partnerships with other organizations and companies. I brought products to market where you go out, you have to go out and talk to stakeholders, understand what the benefits is you're trying to deliver, quantify those, measure them, and then adjust what we're doing. We could do that here much better here in the city. Is basically understand what we're trying to do, measure it, and then actually adjust and fix the problems that we have with it. The last six years, I've been a community activist. So I've focused on organizing, helping organize the Cambridge, or Cambridge Streets for All, and also the Neighborhood Nine Coalition. I've worked, I've worked in that role with many, many of the, on many issues, including ordinances and policy orders. So I've had an opportunity to work with many people within the council as well as the city. So I know what I'm getting into. What do I want, what do I want to work on? Well, number-one issue that I see going to people's doors is this, this upzoning in neighborhoods. So I think that we'd like to repeal it. We have some signs out front. I'm cooperating with some other candidates to publicize this. We want to repeal that and start over and get that fixed. It hurts the middle class. It hurts neighborhoods, and we need to fix it. It's not building new, new and less expensive housing. So with that, I'll, I'll leave it at that. I want to do much more, but I also need your number-one vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Zion Sharon.
All right. So I don't think I'm going to use the mic. Can everyone hear me? All right. Perfect. I'm Zion Sharon. I'm running a grassroots campaign. I'm not taking a dime from developers or PACs because I believe that everything should be people-focused. Elections really are about residents and should not be distracted by outside forces. As far as my background, I have two things that I think add to my role as, or future role as a city councillor. One of them is my degree in Applied Economics and Management with a concentration in finance, which I think is going to be very critical in these uncertain times that we're facing. And the second one was working as an instrument operator for a land surveying company. During this time, we got to see so many issues firsthand, whether it was ISMA issues, different aspects of development that most people don't get to see firsthand. That's going to lead me right into my top priority. The current zoning, I think, is ridiculous, and I think that it's going to majorly destroy neighborhoods, not build them. If you talk to most people, they do support multifamily housing. What was passed was not multifamily housing. It was the allowance of commercial-sized apartment buildings to be put up in every neighborhood, being called multifamily. Most people think of multifamily as allowing single-family homes to maybe have four units now, people to be able to actually grow and put an ADU in the back of their yard so they can have a parent or child stay close to home. This is not what it did. Currently, there's discussions about increasing zoning on corridors and squares. We do need more housing on corridors and squares, but some people's definition is within half a mile of squares and a quarter mile of corridors. That's going to radically change all of the neighborhoods even more than currently is happening. I'm a strong believer that we need to revisit a lot of aspects on this zoning. Buy right is great for small projects. It is not great for commercial-sized projects. When you have a hundred-unit apartment building being put in with zero parking, that impacts the entire street. When you have a four-unit building put in, that's a different story. So when it comes to buy-right development, it should be limited to truly residential projects. And having some oversight is not a bad thing. This is part of development. I have right here the current size that is allowed buy right, and this is how it's going to negatively impact neighbors. If you're here and you have solar panels and a nine-story building gets put up next to you, you may lose all of your ability to have sunlight. There's a lot more that I'd love to cover. I'm here with my campaign manager, Michelle. If you have any questions, please reach out to either one of us after. We're happy to take your questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Ned Malanson.
Hi, everybody. My name is Ned Malanson. I'm a challenger candidate this year, first time running. I live on Alston Street, which is right behind this building, and I guess I'm technically in the shadow of this large commercial building. But it's actually quite sunny on my porch that I go out on every morning, and I look at this building and I think about all the people that live here. So yeah, you know, and I am a public defender up at Cambridge District Court. I'm running on a pro-housing, pro-bike, and what I call anti-Trump platform with a focus on the ICE raids and our response to them. Thank you. And I want to join some councillors that I like to consider progressive on the council. I think there's about four of them, including Berhan Azim, Mark McGovern, Sumbo Siddiqui, and Jeevan Sridhaya Wheeler. I would like to be a pivotal fifth vote on the bike issue to expand our bike lane network and to continue with our push for more housing in Cambridge of all types. You know, something that I'm proud of, I don't have a legislative record. This is the first time I've run for anything, including even school president. I am proud of my work as a public defender at Cambridge District Court, where I've helped a young man who was a gunshot victim in Cambridge navigate his way out of the criminal justice system into a diversionary program called Community Court, which used to be called Homeless Court. And he has now been paralegal social workers with housing, and he just applied for his first job interview at a Marshalls outside of Boston. So helping that young individual really turned his life around. He's a drug addict as well, and he was homeless living on the streets of Cambridge, probably my proudest achievement in my professional life. And it's something I would hope to replicate as a city councillor, where I not just bring, you know, ideas and policy that can change the city and the world, but also help individuals through constituent services, because that's such an important piece, too. You know, we talk about these big ideas, but at the end of the day, you know, we still have to help individuals navigate a large bureaucracy that is the city. And I have a lot of skills with that, not only as a public defender, but in my work as a social security disability lawyer. If you know anything about the Social Security Administration, it's a lot more time with phone reps than it is actual lawyering. So I hope to bring these skills to the city council, join some councillors that I really admire, continue the work, and I need your number one vote to do that. I'm Ned Malanson, and I thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Catherine Zuzie.
Thank you. I think most of you know me. So I'm Cathy Zuzie, and I'm running for reelection to the Cambridge City. I'm Cathy Zuzie, and I'm running for reelection to the Cambridge City Council. I think most of you. Okay, so I'll really go. Okay. My number one priority is to support the creation of housing and affordable housing where it should be, mostly along transportation corridors, our squares and in transition districts as recommended by Envision Cambridge, the 2019 plan that engaged 5,000 residents. We need to encourage growth back to the corridors. However, the height CDD and my colleagues are proposing for North Mass Ave and Cambridge Street are way too high. For North Mass Ave, they're proposing ten, twelve, fifteen, eighteen, and twenty-five stories. For Cambridge Street, they're proposing eight, ten, twelve, and fifteen stories and sometimes higher, and Central Square is next. We must amend the multifamily housing ordinance, which encourages willy-nilly as a right construction in our neighborhoods, allowing developers to determine where and how the city grows. I was the lone vote against the multifamily housing ordinance, not because I was against building housing, but because I was concerned that it would mostly produce luxury housing, inflate property values, and displace the very people it was meant to protect. We must amend the ordinance so that it, or so that, six stories is no longer as of right, and the minimum lot size needs to be larger than 5,000 square feet. Balconies and green roofs can no longer satisfy the open space requirement. Side and rear setbacks need to be greater than five feet, and there must be some parking required. We also need to incentivize property owners to improve existing housing stock and to add auxiliary dwelling units to existing properties. This is the greatest and cheapest way to produce more housing without displacing neighbors and disrupting neighborhoods. The accomplishment I'm most proud of is a revitalization of Magazine Beach Park. Many of you were part of that with me. I've been at this for fifteen years. It's an environmental and social justice success story that started with a CNA neighborhood cleanup. Go for more seats, votesuc.org. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next, we have Tim Flaherty.
Hi, everyone. My name is Tim Flaherty. I'm a candidate for Cambridge City Council. I'm a challenger. And I've lived in Cambridge my whole life. I grew up in a two-family on Woodbridge Street. And during that time, I felt as though I knew every single family within a twenty-block radius. And I think maybe I did. I loved that sense of community. I have great relationships from that time in life, and I treasure my memories, some are actually even true, from playing baseball at Como Field and basketball at Orange Park. I now live in West Cambridge with my wife and my son Timothy. I love coaching on the Tigers and boys from across the city in CYO basketball, and I love walking around the pond with our dogs. So why am I running? Because I think I can help. Too often in this city, I believe our politics are a little polarized. We need people in the Cambridge City Council that can move the polarization, move away from that, to compromise, to make sure that we're looking to the common good. We live in a special place. This is home to some of the most wonderful, generous, diverse, intelligent people on the planet, home to two of the greatest universities in the world. The epicenter in research and biotech, clean energy, life sciences is in Kendall Square. We've done amazing things for our people in education, healthcare, access to housing, civil rights and liberties, providing for our marginalized and our impoverished people. But too often, we're polarized. If you dropped out of a plane into the city of Cambridge, you'd think the only things that are going on are bike lanes and affordable housing. It's a big city, folks. It's a big city. One of the things I'll work on when I'm a city council with your support, and I ask each of you for your number one vote. I've got my professional career has served me well. I worked as a prosecutor and now as a defense attorney in a very polarized criminal justice system. And I've got a track record of success, even when the odds are against me. I think often of some of the kids on the Tigers and CYO basketball, but even more importantly, the kids that I've worked with from Newtown Court, Walden Square, Washington Elms, that their lives have been touched by urban violence. We need to work with them. If there's a kid in Newtown Court that can't walk to Kendall Square, get an internship that leads to a high-paying job, we're failing him. And the thing that I'm most proud of is being a father. There's nothing more important than family. Thank you all very much. Please think of me as your number one.
Thank you. Next, we have Peter Shu.
Hello, folks. I'm Peter Shu, and I am a currently practicing physician. I work as a hospital medicine doctor. I also used to take care of kids with cancer. I teach at Harvard Medical School. And the reason why I want to run is because I would love to raise the standards of public health for our beloved Cambridge, but especially for the most vulnerable populations here in Cambridge. About four years ago, I took care of a patient that got admitted to the hospital for drug overdose. When it was time for a discharge, I said, "Ready for discharge?" He said, "I don't know what to do." He said, "What do you mean?" I said, "Yeah, you know, I said, 'What do you mean?'" And he said, "Other than drugs, I don't know what else to do with life." So that was the moment where I realized that beyond the hospital walls, we needed a more robust healthcare system. So that was how I came into this race. Nobody has ever run on a public health platform for, as a Cambridge City Council over the past twenty-plus years. There are public health issues, but that is my platform, and I think that is a unique opportunity for Cambridge. I think we can shine as a model city in public health for the rest of the nation. There are, on any given night, there are more than 500 people on street at homeless. Every year, there are more than 50 cases of narcotic overdose, and that is an underestimate because only the reported ones are documented. You triangulate that with mental health issues. There's a lot of things that we can do as a city, so that's why I want to run. And, you know, I think one thing I want to say is public health is not just about taking care of used needles on playgrounds, solving homelessness, and caring for folks with mental or physical conditions, all of which are near and dear to my heart and things that I have planned for if elected. Public health also encompasses areas such as affordable housing, safe bike lanes, green space, and fair economics. I think we have heard a lot of my people saying that, you know, Cambridge is very polarized. And I just want to, I just want to say that, you know, I am very, I'm evidence-based, data-driven. I don't believe in ideologies. For the Affordable Care House or the upzoning bill, I think that has a, that is a danger to our community, especially in the established neighborhoods. I'm all for affordable housing, but I think there must be a middler way. So I ask you for your number one vote. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Peter. Next, we have Sumbo Siddiqui.
Good evening, everyone. It doesn't work. Oh, okay. All right. I'm going to talk loud, bring my theater voice in. Hello, everyone, and thank you so much for having me. My name is Sumbo Siddiqui, and I'm running for reelection. My family immigrated here from Pakistan when I was two. I grew up in the Range Towers and later Roosevelt Towers and attended Head Start in Cambridge Public Schools, then became a public interest attorney, providing free legal aid. I'm also currently a fellow at the Kennedy School. I have a proven track record for delivering results for our community. When I was mayor, I made universal pre-K a priority. After years of discussion, I brought together key stakeholders, and this term, we launched the Cambridge Preschool Program, offering free, high-quality preschool to every four-year-old and some three-year-olds in our city. We will continue to evaluate CPP and build on its success. I also helped launch and expand Rise Up Cambridge, the first non-lottery guaranteed income program in the country, providing 2,000 families with $500 a month for eighteen months. This program ended in February, but gave parents the financial stability to support their families. And now we need to continue to figure out how to support our most vulnerable, especially under this administration, and work hand-in-hand with our nonprofits that are also facing challenges. I'm also proud of helping launch the early college program, Lesley University. This program lets Sierra students earn college credits for free while still in high school. Looking ahead, it's really hard to pick one priority because I am not and never will be a single-issue politician. To me, serving the community has always been about representing people across all policy decisions and serving as a gateway to City Hall to make sure people are and feel heard. I think that's important now more than ever, and that what Cambridge needs at this moment is some stability and continuity through bold collaborative leaders committed to building on our shared values and past progress. To that end, my priority will still be to continue also supporting our families. And one way I hope to do this is by expanding after-school programs for all. This is a multi-layered issue and involves working with DHSP to expand K-8 programming and close the gap between seats offered and the demand. But it will also require continued evaluation of CPP so that we can figure out how to best provide after-school programming for our kids. I love serving. I live in Cambridgeport. I love Cambridgeport. I look forward to getting to know all of you more. Please visit votesumbo.com. I really hope to earn your number one vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mark McGovern.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you all so much for being here, and thank you to the Cambridgeport Neighborhood Association for hosting. My name is Mark McGovern. I am currently serving my sixth term on the council. I've served one term as mayor and two terms as vice mayor. I am a social worker. I've worked for over thirty years with some of the most vulnerable children and families right here in Cambridge, as well as across the state, and I bring those values with me to City Hall. I do want to talk a little bit. Housing's been a big issue tonight, and I'm a little surprised by some of the things that I'm hearing. That tall buildings don't belong in neighborhoods. That tall buildings don't belong on residential streets. That tall buildings ruin the character of a neighborhood. When we're sitting in a twelve-story building in a residential neighborhood that was built in 1966, and I can't imagine this neighborhood being without this building, and more importantly, the people who live in this building. So the reality is, is that we have a 400-year-old city, and our neighborhoods have changed countless times. This neighborhood was marshland and underwater, as was my neighborhood in Riverside. And then in the mid-1900s, when the city was booming because of the Industrial Revolution and people were moving here to work in our factories, kind of similar to what we have today, the city filled in those wetlands to expand neighborhoods. I'm not sure that the people back then were thrilled that they once had riverfront property, and now they're living in some of the densest neighborhoods in the city. But we did it because we had a crisis that we had to address. We have a housing crisis now. No wetlands to fill in, which means we have to build taller buildings. And I don't think there's anybody in this room or in this neighborhood that would say that this building and the people who live in it are a detriment to this neighborhood, right? The Manning Building, right down the street, 411 Franklin Street, to Mount Auburn Street, Burns. There are tall buildings in residential neighborhoods throughout this city. So, you know, I just, I just really have to push back on that. I'm proud of my housing stance. I got thirty seconds. One thing that I'm really proud of in this last term, as many of you know, I do a lot of work with our unhoused population. I helped bring ninety-three studio apartments to Cambridge that moved ninety-three unhoused Cambridge residents off the street and into housing just this year alone. If I'm reelected, I'm going to keep fighting for the most vulnerable people in our community. That's why I've been a public servant my entire life. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, I'm so sorry, but please don't talk to the candidates. Next, we have Denise Simmons.
Good evening, everyone. I hear we don't have a mic, so I'm going to use my outside voice. Is that okay? Great. I know I'm a little loud. That's my mother's voice. It's great to be here, and a very, very special thank you to Frank. Where's Frank? In the back? Frank, thank you for always opening up your house, literally, because he lives here. My name is Denise Simmons, and I'm currently serving my twelfth term on the city council. I know I don't look that old, but it's the oil of Olay with the formaldehyde. This is my third term as mayor, and I am deeply proud to call Cambridge my home. It is where I raised my family, built my business, and spent decades working to make the city more just, more inclusive, and more responsive to everyone that lives here. If I'm reelected, my number one priority will be to continue expanding access to affordable housing. I know you've heard that a lot, but it takes five people to get anything done, so I would want to be one of those five. In recent years, I've tripled the fees commercial developers pay into our Affordable Housing Trust. I've led the fight to double inclusionary zoning requirements and championed the Affordable Housing Overlay, which is really part of why we have more affordable housing for working families, for our seniors that would have been priced out of their neighborhoods without it. This term, I supported the end of exclusionary zoning to allow more multifamily housing citywide. These are the, these are the kinds of bold, pragmatic actions that we must keep taking. But if you ask me what I'm most proud of beyond my children, it's not just a single policy. It's the perspective I bring to every conversation in City Hall. I'm the city council who will always ask, "Who's not in the room? Who's not being represented? How were the decisions that we made affect our senior citizens, our single mothers?" Someone watch his clock. Too often, they are not a part of the conversation. We can't govern if the people that we are asked to govern, that we run to govern, are not heard, especially our seniors. So I meet with them regularly. I have the last fifteen years run a... Can I have someone else sign? Very quickly, I appreciate being here to talk to you and let you know what I do and what I want to continue to do. So I respectfully ask you for your number one vote on Tuesday, November 4th. How's that? Thank you.
Thank you. Last but not least, we have Aya Alzubi.
Fire raises of hands. How many of you all are tired of the national and local political climate? Raise your hands. So a good chunk of the room. Hi, everyone. My name is Aya Alzubi. I use the She/Her series, and you may remember me from the 2023 election when our campaign came in tenth of the nine seats as the first runner-up. We're back again because we have a relentless focus on ensuring we're moving to protect our neighbors, you all, from the Trump administration while also delivering on issues like housing crisis and the cost of living, which you all deserve. We believe that our city can be dignified and affordable for everyone. Our campaign believes that nobody should have to worry about making rent or affording a home, but we don't take real estate developer money. We don't believe in selling out our city to developers. Instead, what we want to do is leverage government resources to build housing that we can ensure will remain affordable. The second is also no one. The second is also no one should have to worry about getting around safely, regardless of your mode of transportation. Whether you're a pedestrian, whether you're a biker, whether you're someone accessing the MBTA system, you should be able to navigate our roads safely. So we're going to work on making the number one bus free. We're going to work on creating a sidewalk safety ordinance to ensure the accessibility of our sidewalks. And we should also increase shuttle services for elderly as well. We also believe that no one should have to worry about accessing childcare. The past year, the city turned down over two hundred families. And we believe we need to invest more resources so that our, our caregivers can access after school. The one that I really want to highlight for you all is that we believe that no one should have to worry about affording food. This is such a big one in a neighborhood like ours where I'm your neighbor because we're sandwiched by Whole Foods. And I don't know about you all, but I can't sustainably shop at Whole Foods. And especially in light of daily table closing, we want to work on creating the first city-run grocery store. All we need is political will to push on the city manager to do it. I'll leave you with this. I was one of the organizers who advocated and empowered the residents from the Wellness Shelter, the Wellness Center, which is a homeless shelter the city shut down. And we brought them into city council to tell them that you all are dignified human beings and your voices deserve to be heard. I hope you know that I'm a city councillor that sees you, and a vote for our campaign is a vote for you.